Welcome to a meeting of the Holiday Island Board of Commissioners. Today is Monday, August 28th. This is a business meeting of the board held in public. The board is committed to disclosure of the business activities of the district to the public, as well as the public's ability to make comments at public meetings. On behalf of the Holiday Island Commissioners, I call this meeting to order. I want to remind all in attendance that the Board of Commissioners acts as a governing body, whereas the district manager is responsible for the day-to-day operations of the district. The purpose of the board as elected representatives of the property owners is to provide direction to the district manager and to assure the financial solvency of the district. It is not the responsibility of the Commissioners to become involved in the daily operations of the district. Let's stand in place. Commissioner Stamps, will you please call roll?
Roll call. Mr. Datter.
Present.
Commissioners Kell, Kilber.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Datter, I've already told you.
Please.
Commissioner Stamps here, please. Mr. Sillaw.
Present. All Commissioners present, I declare a forum. Of the approval of the agenda. We have an amendment to the agenda, item number four on the new business. Following our executive session, item number three. Item number four will be consideration action obtained regarding the district manager's employment agreement. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda amendment?
Move.
A second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Out of opposed, say nay. The ayes have a motion to approve the agenda period. Commissioners, you have received by email the minutes of the July 24 regular meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes as emailed?
Move.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is carried to approve the minutes. Ceremonial, I don't have anything this time. We actually said something on ceremonial today. Announcements, anything? What announcements? So we will now hear general comments from the public and Ms. Coon, would you, oh, you said no. Mr. Sillik, would you like to?
Sure.
Tell us what's on your mind.
Al Sillik, 22 Buckskin Lane. Just a few questions or curiosities, I guess, I have. For the last couple of years, there's been an issue with the pond on number one, on the small golf course. We're repeatedly told that it's fixed, but there's still, if you went down there today, there's a four, three to four inch ring of algae around the edge of the pond. There's a question I brought up one time about EPA barriers where they're rebuilding the rec center. And there were a few hay bales out, but there's still a lot of mud washing out, especially when it's heavy rains, down into the pond. You could sit and watch the pond turn, we turn brown as the water, mud flowed into it. I was told that, well, it's just a little mud, it doesn't make any difference. But then later on, during a different meeting that I was not at, but I was told at that meeting that the people who were there were told, well, the pond needs to be dredged and we can't afford it. Well, I suppose if there's continual mud flowing into it, maybe it does need to be dredged. And then also there's a issue of a bubbler that was purchased and installed, and the bubbler wasn't running. We were told, well, it runs between 11 o'clock at night and 8 o'clock in the morning. Off my back window and I can look at it. And I've got a couple of neighbors that look at it and check it from time to time and get up at some time during the night, go and check it. The bubbler's not working. I don't know what the problem with the bubbler is. I've been told it's been checked and it should be working, but it's not. And I just want to make sure that everyone's aware that the bubbler that was purchased is not working. And on the second issue, at that July 24 meeting that you just mentioned, I asked for, if we could have updates on the rec center. Seem to be a lot of issues, a lot of things, you know, stories going around about what was what. And I asked if we could have some, you know, official updates. And then next Friday, in the Friday newsletter that came out, it was a nice little article about what was going on. It was mentioned that the plans were, been sent to the state because that'd be reviewed by the state. And then that was the last update that was ever given. You know, I had hoped that when that one showed up, that one Friday, that meant each Friday, maybe we'd get just a little statement, you know, that, you know, the plans are still there, the plans are being reviewed, the plan's been sent back, we're going to start doing some piping, but nothing. And it would just be nice to know, have some idea of what's going on, good, bad, or ugly. I guess it'd be nice to know. Obviously, it's not going to be done this summer, but, you know, next, next summer. And at the last meeting, at that July meeting also, Commissioner Brown requested a report at this meeting. And I don't see anything on the agenda. I don't think I overlooked it. And I just got the new amended agenda and I don't see anything on there either. So I just feel that the citizens are, do some, you know, some kind of update of what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sillik. That's the only request I have to speak at this meeting, all right, at this time. So we will move on to the reports. And Dan, could you introduce this, Dan Treger?
Sure. Most of you know Dan Treger, who's the director of Warren and Sewer. And he is working on the PRV, the pressure relief valve project. And he's here to give us an update on that, although they've made some progress. So Dan, can you fill us in?
Sure. We have six more PRVs to install this year and that'll be the end of it of the six. We still have, there's four that were, are newer, so we're just going to keep an eye on them. We're not, at this point, we're not going to change them, but maybe at a later date. So we still have four new ones in stock and we'll change out the six and we'll be done.
That's, that's very good. Now, the total of 38, correct?
I think it's 35.
35.
Yeah, we had a little discrepancy in counting. Some that don't need to be replaced are actually turned off, so we have a lower number. I guess they were counted originally, but when I went back and looked down, it's like, there's no reason to change these three. So, yeah, we're at 35.
All right. Thank you. There was some equipment that came that was not right, that the new replacement stuff was supposed to come the end of August. Is that?
Yeah, the new parts, the parts we're waiting for finally showed up last week. So it was, it was just minor parts, it just, you know, but they did show up, so we're ready to go. I already got the contractor that's replacing them. So we're just trying to figure out the schedule, since he's kind of tied up right now and we're tied up. We're going to kind of wait till maybe cooler weather, our flows are a little high right now. So we're just trying to coordinate that and get them done.
Good to know we're making up that progress.
Dan, once things are all in, as you said it's done, how much more work did you approve? Have to adjust the pressure on any one of them?
They're adjusted as soon as we put them in. They're adjusted as soon as we put them in.
Okay.
But that, you know, so we don't have to go back. I mean, it's something, we may have to go back and change them a little bit, but, I mean, we're setting them as we, as we go, so.
Thank you.
And one simple question. As a result of the replacements, have you noticed any changes in the system? Specifically, more normalized pressures and fewer leaks, anything? Have you seen any changes?
Not, not what we can really see as of yet. I mean, we're still, you have to understand, we're still going to have high pressure. Just because we put these PRVs in doesn't mean our high pressure is going away. It has to do with elevation, you know. And I talked in the beginning that we're replacing the original PRVs we have. And, you know, our next phase, as I mentioned before, was we may need to look at installing more PRVs to get the pressure down. But we're, we're never going to get that, you know, 70 pounds of pressure consistent throughout the system. It's just not, not feasible, so. It's just going to be, you know, work in progress.
Second question, well, number four. It was offline you, right, a while. Why was it taken offline? I had people asking me about that and I don't know.
It hasn't been offline.
It hasn't been offline?
No. I mean, last time it's been offline was about two years ago in January. We replaced the well motor. It's been running ever since.
Is that the island though?
No, well, four was up by, well, it's patchy.
Are we hearing? So you get the new backup generator, where did you get that from?
Oh, I can address that. I know that the, the generator is here. It's in, I believe it's in their Springdale location. And they were waiting on the automatic transfer switch, the electrical parts for that. But it literally could be any day now.
And maybe all the installation?
And that is including installation. And I had the contractor pour the slab a couple of months ago, so it's ready to go.
Decided to practice.
Decided to practice.
Thank you. Mr. Dan? Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate you coming in. Next on the list, old business, we have none. New business. First item is consideration action to receive and accept the July 2023 end of month financial reports. The question is to receive and accept the financial reports for July. Do I have a motion? I think a motion that we receive and consider approval of the end of month financial reports for July 2023. Right, second.
Sure.
District manager press, please, we require an annual statement.
Can you expand that? Out center. Yeah. Well, you can see over on the, the column on the far right is total expenditures for the year. And we're at 71.2%. So our, and we're roughly 60% of the year. So we're running a little ahead of schedule, as I said, the last couple of months. That's primarily the purchases in the fire department, which right now they're at 132% of budget. And those were obviously necessary expenditures for the ISO rating. But I will say that the last quarter of equipment and supplies has arrived. So I think we can shut off this spigot now for the spending. We, we got in several hundred feet of hose. And so all of the trucks now have good hose that's been tested. Some of the old stuff's been replaced. And the new trucks that we purchased, all four trucks have all of the hose.
And all the trucks are here.
And all the trucks are here and all the stations are, are equipped with a truck. So we're in good shape.
I have a question on some fire, we're really, fire fighters, I think you can call them, fire fighters, protecting and testing.
And I, I know that that process is ongoing. I don't have a current report for you. I could get you some information to follow up later in the thing. Dan, I'm happy to defer to you if you have any input on that.
I'm just, I don't have anything. I'm waiting for a feedback.
Okay.
Because I ask us some, well, concerned about the ISO rating at the end of the year. Done a good job of buying trucks and everything that the chief needed to get the ISO as low as can, or keep it at what it is. But if the fire fighters aren't working, several, many of them, that would be not a good thing. ISO ratings.
I don't think it's, they are working, aren't they? I'm just saying, I am like, we're not working. There are a few, I think, that are turned off.
Correctly, if I'm wrong, but there are 238 fire hydrants in Holiday Island. And I'm aware of two or, but weren't a couple of those fixed or replaced? So, so out of 238 fire hydrants, we have two that, that still may be a problem. So I think we're in pretty good shape. We will get those others repaired or replaced. But then, are those the ones that are on four inch?
Well, the ones we're having issues with is, is the fire department's looking at these different hydrants. And, you know, their total may be different than what I see. We do have a problem with four inch lines, as you know. They're not rated for hydrants. You're not, you're not supposed to have a fire hydrant on four inch line. That's just, but we do. So, you know, the fire department, for instance, you know, over in the, I don't know what area you call that, but Sunrise State Line or that area, northern section, you know, we have reports like the six inch spigot doesn't work or the threads are messed up. Well, that's a good thing because you're not supposed to be, you know, and all that six inches for that inlet is to draw water out of it. You cannot have, you know, six inch hose from a fire truck pulling out of there. So, you know, we do have issues that we can't, you know, that won't be solved. So it's going to be one of those, okay, what, you know.
I agree with Dan for explaining that to us. I think that's why I was concerned about four inch lines. But when the chief boxes new vehicles and we offer ourselves, we have enough tenders to get the water to fire. Is that correct?
That's correct. And if you have adequate ability to carry water with the tenders and then the trucks that we've all have large tanks on them. And that mitigates problems with the ISO rating.
Are four inch lines, Dan, one other question on four inch lines. Do you agree with the thumb around the district or are there just four inch lines in some areas and others that are different, with water lines or the pipe? Are they, every hydrant is a four inch line?
No. It's just certain areas that have four inch lines.
The line is about 20%, that's what it was, about 20% of the islands. And it doesn't mean that those hydrants don't work. It means that they don't put out an optimum amount of money. But if, you can buffer these trucks and, I did this in my former life in another city. But if you've got, if you've got a pumper that's attacking the fire and it is attached to a tanker that is backfilling with a hydrant, you're, you know, you're backfilling continuously that water, which is hugely important, even if you're drawing that water out of a four inch line and you're not getting, you know, the full GPM that you would like to have. So to say that they don't work is really a misnomer. They do work, you know, they, they might be running at 70 or 80% capacity as compared to a six inch or an eight inch line.
Well, it seems to me that fires don't conveniently always happen, like, when there's a hydrant. So fire people are bound to know how to deal with cranking or even the water, if they need, or whatever the conversation is. Right about that.
True. And we've had, you know, unfortunately, we've had some, some major structure fires just in the last several months since we've been having this discussion about hydrants and ISO rating and all that. And our equipment and our personnel have been very effective at being able to not be on a structure fire. So I'm, I'm very confident in our ability to take care of that even when it happens.
I think, I, I monitor the fire department's calls and, as well as Eureka Springs. And I think it's important to note that surrounding fire departments, it is standard protocol. If they get a structural fire call, automatically the 9/11 dispatchers call for UTA to surround the communities. That, I mean, just within the last week, there was a fire and a structural fire in Bavariania and Eureka Springs. Right away, they brought in our fire department. Our guys went and manned the Eureka fire station, since they were all out. They had that all there, they had, you know, the one from the last, anyway, there were like five fire departments there. The same with Eagle House. They had fire team, fire, a structural fire, they had one yesterday. And immediately they hit UTA there, so they have that water support. The other thing that I think is important to note, and Dan, I, I hope this is, I can't agree with what you think, but I remember a year ago when Jeff from ESI was here and we were talking about four inch lines. And even today, they are designing systems in Vanville and in Rogers and other major cities and putting in four inch lines. So we, we should hesitate branding them as the Nemesis. The Nemesis is the fact that they were improperly installed and maybe not correct kind of materials that we would want today. But four inch lines are alive and well in nearly every community and even brand new construction systems, in some cases they're using four inch lines.
You cannot get the flow required from a four inch line. What they're doing is they're putting two inch fire hydrants or just like an air leaf or they're not fire rated. Four inch line does not deliver enough water.
Well, I don't, I don't know if Jeff meant they were putting hydrants on them, but they were using four inch lines.
If you use, I mean, it, it depends. I've, I've run a system that had four inch lines. However, their fire system was between six and eight. It was a separate source.
Yeah.
So you can't have those, but a four inch line itself cannot sustain a fire flow that's required. It just, you can't.
No, no, I agree with you 100%.
Okay, I was just saying.
I don't think Jeff has any way to clarify that.
Okay, just so we got that clear.
The overall, you know, branding four inch lines is bad and for use. They're not a fire system, they're a residential supply system.
Thank you. Let's let you go on.
Sure. Next slide, please. Maybe they won't all take that long. Well, I mean, I know that everyone in the room is concerned about, you know, our fire department water supply and all that. Revenue, I don't know what happened to my total there. But revenue is, is on par. Water, wastewater is up. And go to the next slide, please. The next slide will show you the percentage of budget. So you see water and wastewater is at 88% on revenue at roughly 60% of the year. So we're doing really well there. And then 18 over Pro Shops at 92%. And then you can see the restaurant there is up quite a bit. So I, I think what you're seeing there is really, really strong revenue with our golf. And I think the pricing adjustments that we've made in adjusting the two times from Warren and his committee that we put together, I think that's really helping us there. That's some of our costs. Everything else looks pretty much on par. Okay, next. That general, can you go back one? I want to explain something, I probably, the percentages. Share the next slide down. Down. Percentages. Right there. I want to clarify, we're, general fund, it says 0%. The general fund is AOB revenue. So that's, that's why, I probably shouldn't have just taken that one out. But what we're looking at here is non-AOB revenue. So the general fund doesn't really count on this slide. I'll take that out next one. So here's where we're at. Total, we're at 80% revenue at, at 60% of the year. Actually, if you go through July, you know, seven months, that's 58% of the year. And we're at 80% of revenue, so doing really well there.
And that's clean. I'm agreeing on that.
Yeah, yeah, the actuals.
Yeah.
So I, I think, now, the revenue, it obviously will, will taper off as, as the weather and the golf slows down, the marina slows down and all of that. And then you'll see a sharp uptick, obviously, in the AOB revenue when they come due in October. So September is, we really start to see that increase in AOB revenue. But I think we're going to surpass what we budgeted, the 1.8 million in revenue. I think we'll surpass that mark. Next slide, please. So there's our reserves, 37.1. And you can see the, the July 23 CD balance, and I think I have another slide on this, but 1.58 million. We're seeing some really good returns on CDs because of the interest rate market right now is just really high. Next slide, please. So that's where we're at. Can you go up just slightly more? So, okay, yeah, we're, we're on par with where we were in 2020 at this same time, July 24.
And that's, that's despite the labor shortages we had.
Correct. That, that's exactly right. And, and that's why you kind of see that, you know, that downturn there. And then obviously you'll see it go back up between now and October. Slide please. You know, not much to say on the cash flow summary, it's. Okay. I'm happy to answer any questions. As, as I mentioned, and this is sort of a sidebar, but I'm taking a deep dive into the golf revenue and expenditures as a part of the capital project for that course that I'm working on, which is data-driven decision-making. And I'll, I'll have that completed this week and at some point I'll share that with the board so you can see. And it goes back to 2018. And it's, it's really interesting, as I'm putting this together, you can see the impact of COVID on our golf operations. Anyway, I'll have that for you soon.
It would be good, might be good to have that presentation or whatever, the project, fire to work on, from the next year.
That's, yes, sir, that's my goal, yes, sir.
Good.
I have a question on the UV system for the Mark Sirup.
I have a question on the UV system for the Mark Suruplan. And it was initially probably about seven hundred and fifty thousand. And so we're going to have to work that into next year's budget as well as possibly a loan. But where are we on getting figures on that and the Jeff's working on?
The cost estimate from Jeff was eight hundred and thirty eight thousand. I think I sent that out a couple of weeks ago. And, um, the the funding, and I I talked to Jeff about this just a little over a week ago. The funding comes before the engineer. When the project's funded, they will begin, you know, full on engineering. Now, they had it roughly together. In fact, you may remember he had some blueprints here that he brought in almost a year ago. So the design work is pretty much in place, but to finalize the design, they're going to wait on the funding. Because their portion that we pay ESI is is a percentage of the project cost. And that's on that schedule that that I showed you a lot of.
So so if we go for a loan for that that period at the same time as you approved the project, how do we fund it?
I'm not sure I understand.
In other words, if we had eight hundred and thirty eight thousand cash in bank, we just wanted to check and then start applying some of the installation of the project. We don't have that much, so we're going to have to wait. Oh, and the loan is through the grant or through the, what's that still?
Right. That's correct. And that that second, and actually it's the third loan application was sent in about a week and a half ago.
For the same project?
For that same project. That project as well as well number five. Both projects. The money did that and other other attempts? Uh, basically, yes. Um, the the other money was coming from the Rescue Act and the state of Arkansas got, it's like the one point three billion or one point four billion dollars. Um, they awarded some of that money and O'Barryville got a lot of money. We got sixty eight thousand here for well number one. And then the, what they call the WAC, the the Water Wastewater Advisory Committee in Little Rock, was going to have a series of meetings this year, every other month, to review grant applications. Well, those meetings have not been happening, they were postponed. And to my knowledge, they've not awarded anything this year. And what I have heard is that that money has been redirected to other state projects. So I, you know, I don't know exactly how they make the sausage in Little Rock, but it's it's. It's not pretty. And 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 I've mentioned this before, because we are not a low to moderate incomes, what they call LMI community, we're probably not eligible for those grants anyway. So what what I anticipate happening would be an offer for a low interest loan for those projects.
Do you have an idea of how much it would be?
No, sir.
But the longer we put it off, the more it's going to cost. Obviously, it's going to. People already. And if we set on our hands and say, okay, let's just, we're going to wait for this and the engineer is going to apply for this and we're going to get this grant and we're going to do this and we're going to do that. We're sitting here burning money. We need to get it done. We don't need to set on our hands. We need to go ahead and get it done. Get the wells number five fixed, get the sort of plant fixed and go from there. We have the money, but we're going to run out. Keep on waiting.
My understanding is that we can cash funds the UV project. Is that correct? The the money from the tower and the purple wave is almost sufficient.
Yes.
To fund, cash fund the UV project.
Yes, I would say that's correct.
And so perhaps we should put that on the agenda and get that moving now since we have the funds allocated and available. And so I I rather than wait for the city, Stevens, the state to help us on. And the low, we cannot fund well five. We don't have the cash in the bank to fund well five. But low interest loans they extend anyway because we don't want to draw our cash balances down when we finance. It's just like the mortgage, you're maybe pay two hundred and fifty thousand for your house. Why why do that when you get an interest that attract an interest?
Interest rates are not not becoming more attractive.
No, they're not.
They're they're going the other direction.
They're returning.
We're just.
But I said, part of our investments, but we're not here to add any investments. We're here to make our cash work for our community. And if we have to, you know, if the money comes out of CD balances or money market balance, doesn't matter. It's designated already for that project. So I think we should get together and and make a commitment on that.
Yes, and just to clarify, the the major projects fund that we're committed to a year or so ago is almost eight hundred thousand dollars. That money is still there. Um, and we committed that it would not be spent on anything other than these water projects. Uh, but that money is not reflected in the reserve percentage. So even even if we spend that money down, our reserves would still remain around thirty seven percent.
So, I'm sure, are you saying that in September, we, or even if we had called a special meeting, uh, we would take a vote on funding one of those two projects?
I think we do need a project. Yeah.
Let me finish my question.
Okay, now I want to ask.
Uh, that we save the money that Danny just mentioned from the special fund, it's not part of our reserves. And we go ahead like Mr. Stamp says and get this going so the price has to go up, up like everything else is. And we would, but my question on that, I would love to see that happen, great idea. But do is Jeff ready to have that thing shovel ready? Can we go on one of those projects, put the money that we have? That's my question. Seems like forever.
Uh, we have.
Well. I I can't give you an exact timeline on, you know, how long it would take them to be fully finished with plans. Um, I could certainly find out. I'll do that this week.
And isn't there a source wealth company that's already that's pre-approved to do that type of work? And you have been in contact already with that company?
Trojan Systems.
So we're at a point where we make a commitment. We should be able to get Paul Berlin. I I wouldn't decide whether or not to have a special meeting to do that. And I ask, if you recall off the top of your head, the basic cost of rehabbing well five versus the UV project? And what's the difference there was?
Uh, the UV system was eight hundred and thirty eight thousand. The well number five was nine hundred and sixty eight thousand.
Because for myself, given the choice of which one to fund, I would prefer to fund the rehab of well five. Because the UV system doesn't really matter if we can't get water around and around. So that's my own, you know.
Hundred and thirty thousand dollars difference. So, you know, in in the scheme of things, I I see your point, maybe.
And we don't have a, you know, the UV thing doesn't have to be complete for them to do it anyway. Now, I guess it's time to go for a low interest loan. That's that's my thought.
We know they both need to be done.
Why?
But I I guess I, for me, I'd say Dan, which is the most critical.
That's true. It's a very good point.
Which is the most critical, is that one or the other?
Aren't they at all?
Well, if you asked me, it would be well five. Answer them.
Okay.
Uh, you know, it's been a nightmare since I got here and for all you that visited, I mean, you can tell for yourself, it's, you know, I cringe every time I go in there, so.
Well, here's my little deep brain. If I were a governing governing body determining how to hand out grants or low interest loans, I would be more prone to throw that money towards something that the government has mandated, the UV system. I mean, we we could go without that. Feel like we'd stand a greater chance of getting some financial aid for that project than for building our number five well.
What'd you say, man? He was standing up. I mean, I I need to stand up.
From Great Fitness.
That's why I responded. So we have one brain, one to fight.
Five, if you get the UV system installed, we can have the seven thirty first twenty twenty five. But at the end of the day, his priority would be the well, right?
It would be, I mean, you have to understand the well or the UV system, it it was part of our renewal permit. So was, you know, I don't have the exact numbers, but so was every other little small town, uh, you know, was required to do UV system. Of those, I don't know if anybody has met them, so we're not the only ones that have to do this UV system.
Well, if I remembered correctly from your email, Trojan said that as long as we are in the process of doing the work we need to do. That that's what I. Uh, getting approved, um, that's, it's going to take them a while, but yes, let's get, let's let's get started on. Once a month. It's your office. It's not only him. Okay, uh, again, we're finished now with the financials. No, you have not. Uh, it just, I don't have anyone who says they wish to speak regarding this on the sign-in sheet. So we will, uh, are you ready for the motion, commissioners? The motion is to receive and accept financial reports for July of twenty twenty three. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No nays? The ayes have it and financial statements are accepted. Along. Item number two. The consideration action to adopt resolution twenty twenty three dash R two, authorizing the district manager to be the authorized agent to request excess proceeds from the Arkansas Commissioner of State lands. Do I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
So.
Dan, do you have any comments on what that was? Just a little educational comment about what what's involved in work, what was.
Sure. As a result of the foreclosure process, whenever Carroll County did foreclosures on HACIT for lots that were in our name at at the AOB. They went through the foreclosure process, those lands ended up at the Commissioner of State lands in Little Rock, and there are several hundred of them down there. Somehow, and and I'll be candid, I don't understand how this is, but the state has a pot of money that they call excess proceeds associated with those lots. And we discovered that the state, the state claims to owe HACIT about thirteen thousand dollars on those lots. And my thanks to Bruce Larson and to Commissioner Brown, who've done some research on this and tracked down and actually kind of did the math on exactly how much was owed. So there is a, I'll say it's a convoluted process, but there is a process to go through to recover that money. And we're working on that. We have to compile copies of deeds and there's a lot, but the office staff is working on that. So this is just one piece of that process that we have to designate someone to be the authorized signature for the documents associated with this transaction.
Commissioners, are you ready for a motion? The motion is to adopt the resolution authorizing the district manager to be the authorized agent to request excess proceeds from the Commissioner of State lands. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it and the motion is carried.
I just had a sidebar comment. Several years back, I tried to get money from the Texas Home Control and Public Accounts for items like this. It was such a nightmare that it was not worth it. So good luck to you.
You know, I can certainly see where you're, when I saw the list of what we have to do to to get this money, I'm wondering if we're going to spend more than thirteen thousand in staff time to, uh, but we're we're working on it and we'll try to.
Good luck.
Rest of them.
Are you sure we're entertaining a question?
Sure.
I think it's the last meeting I attended, we were, you do my go to my department, yes. State your name.
Barcoon sixty two, Halligan Drive. Question about the properties at Commissioner of State lands. I thought we were talking about mining back some of our property, is that still happening?
Yes, that I'm working with our attorney now to draft a proposal to the state commissioner to negotiate a deal to to get all of those properties back here to HACIT.
Great, thank you.
Maybe we could suggest that they keep the thirteen thousand in the lot.
It's not.
That's a solution.
Save us work.
We're not on the bar system.
I have a question, just one question on Dave Gilbert, thirty one, oh, point. What's wrong with?
Repeat that into the microphone, please.
Dave Gilbert, thirty one, oh, point, right. And then with the cheers, what's wrong with that well?
What, you're talking about well back to well number five?
Yeah.
Uh, it's fifty years old. Um, he, Dan, could tell you the the details of it.
Oh, it just wore out, I mean, what is? The problem with well five is the chlorine is in a same room as the wells. So all electrical, all those pumps, they're all surface rust. You got split case pumps in there. Uh, you got two hundred and fifty pounds pushing against back pressure against those pumps. You know, the housing, the bolts that hold this, if you've ever seen a split case pump, it's two halves, it's bolted together. So these bolts are, you cannot undo them. They're rusted. So all the face is one break and that whole top will come off. So.
So the next go around, you're putting the chemicals in a different room?
That's that's fine.
You don't need a whole new well house?
A whole new well house, it'd be, yeah.
Yes.
It has the design, which we've already seen, the preliminary design, the chlorine system is in one and all the mechanics and pumps and everything here in another.
And fifty years ago, they didn't have that code where you couldn't put chemicals in the same room as the pump, just like pool houses.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, item number three. Going to adjourn to the conference room for a an executive session to discuss the district manager's appointment. And we will, uh, be back here in a while to, uh, to tell you the results from that discussion and to vote on if necessary.
discussion and to vote on if necessary. So I'm gonna take a little break and I will let you know when we're ready to come back. Thank you.